It is six thirty P M. Verify compliance with open meetings law and call the meeting to order for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three Whitnall School Board Workshop Meeting, the adoption of the agenda and the attendance roll call. I turn that over to our clerk, Rachel Scherer, to do the roll call.
All right. Do I need to say everybody's name first?
And they will respond with, either they're here or they won't respond and thus they will be absent.
Okay.
Or if they are excused previously.
All right. Would you prefer your last name said or can I say your first name?
I like Quinn.
All right, let's go with Quinn.
I'm here.
Right. Kevin.
Present.
Jesse.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
I am present. Cassie.
Here.
Jason.
Present. We have a quorum, and please join me as we pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, see if there are any public comments regarding any agenda items. Do we have anyone sign up tonight?
We do. We have two PTOs, Agenda Item five A.
Do we do that after the discussion or prior to?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a workshop meeting, so you do it after the item on the workshop meeting.
Okay, perfect.
And then one PTO is also Agenda five A.
Okay, great. Know that we will, it's that when we. Number three, staff, student and donation recognitions, gifts, grants and donations under one thousand dollars. I will turn that over to our treasurer, Erin McLean.
Before we do that, we, our principals are going to, this is the recognition, so we have our PTOs here because this is the annual recognition of their combination. So I'm going to ask the principals to come up and introduce their PTOs who are here and then we can move on to that. So they are here for that recognition part.
Fantastic.
Good evening. I'm from the Edgerton PTO. We have Ashley Metelski, Jessica Rudig and Kate Egan.
And from H C E, we have our outgoing co-president, Katie Zowakowski.
From middle school, Katie will be coming to the middle school and being on the exec board. We also have Lynn Lopez here, who's our treasurer.
And finally, for the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, we have our new president, Jenny Meyer.
Okay, and so now it's my understanding that I will read into the record the Whitnall School District Gifts, Grants and Donations in amounts under one thousand dollars. So in, to Whitnall High School as the beneficiary in February twenty twenty-three, from donor Catherine Berger slash C G Schmidt in the amount of five hundred dollars, a STEAM donation from the state convention to be used in the high school, middle school STEM slash STEAM program, purchase of three D printer scanner for tech ed. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of six hundred and ninety dollars, supplies for Falcon Fest painted glass sales for the National Art Honor Society. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of three hundred and thirteen dollars, funding for the band's fifty fifty raffle at the Tyler Hero Night to help fund the band's trip. And with the beneficiary of the Athletics and Activities Department, in August twenty twenty-two, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of two hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents, pizza for a leadership conference. In August twenty twenty-two, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of seven hundred dollars for pickleball court striping. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, student council for prom desserts. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, two hundred and fifty dollars, Nationals Hotel Stipend for Skills USA students. In December of twenty twenty-two, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of three hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents, startup funds for the Swim and Dive Club's stocking fundraiser. In March of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of three hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, startup funds for the baseball team's Easter egg fundraiser. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the Skills USA Nationals trip. For the beneficiary of Whitnall Middle School, multiple dates from the Whitnall Middle School PTO in the amount of five hundred and eight dollars for staff appreciation. In September of twenty-two, from the Whitnall Middle School PTO, one hundred and fifty dollars for a literacy initiative, Whitnall Middle School Reads. In February of twenty twenty-three and May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Middle School PTO in the amount of six hundred and ninety dollars for student dances. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Middle School PTO in the amount of six hundred and eighty dollars for author and residence. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Middle School PTO, one hundred and fifty dollars for family literacy night. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Middle School PTO in the amount of five hundred and sixty dollars for the eighth grade promotion. For the beneficiary, Edgerton Elementary School, in March of twenty twenty-three, from Junior Achievement, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, a Junior Achievement Capstone Grant for the fifth grade Junior Achievement Biztown Experience. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton Elementary PTO, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for field trips. And in May of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton Elementary School PTO, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars for Dare T-shirts. For the beneficiary of Hales Corners Elementary, in December of twenty twenty-two, from Junior Achievement, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a Junior Achievement Capstone Grant for the fifth grade Junior Achievement Biztown Experience. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Hales Corners Elementary PTO, eight hundred dollars for staff appreciation. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Hales Corners Elementary PTO, six hundred dollars for family literacy night. And in June of twenty twenty-three, from the Hales Corners Elementary PTO, a hundred and thirty dollars for spirit celebrations. So those are gifts, grants and donations in the amounts under one thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And thank you to the PTOs and the booster clubs for their gracious donations for our students and staff. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item anyone would like to pull?
A.
Anything else?
Jason, I'm wondering if I should pull and read B as well, just because it's more fun to read amounts over one thousand dollars and.
If you'd like to, you can.
I think I will.
All right. Both items are pulled. Uh, for letter A.
Go ahead, Cassie. I think we probably have the same person.
I just had a question about, so I don't think we're on the same page. I think we're different. A question about the note from Dr. Olson that we got at the end of May about the summary for personnel that we would be getting on staff leaving. I see some folks on this particular agenda, but just curious on an update around personnel in general.
When would you?
When would we be getting an update?
Yeah, so we're still working through, so June fifteenth is the statutory timeline that teachers have to return contracts. And so today's the twelfth. So we're working with HR on the last date when teachers have to return their contracts by the state statute. So shortly after that, is that what you're talking about, a summary of the personnel rep?
Yep. Yeah, May, at the end of May, you said you were working on getting that. Just curious if you.
Yep, so we're gathering stuff as it is, but until tonight's meeting, which is the twelfth, because by state statute, it's the timeline through that, teachers have until June fifteenth to return their contracts to districts in both ways, so.
So do you expect it'll be like next meeting, a couple of meetings from now? What's the general turnaround for?
Yeah, I can check with HR on that. I mean, we have it going. We just need to make sure that contracts can be turned in through June fifteenth, and so we just need to make sure we're looking at that. And then it's just adding to it. So I guess it's very, I mean, it's fluid for throughout the summer. So I mean, I guess it's a point in time versus fluid, I guess, if that's what you're asking. Like, it won't be a one-time report because it could be, you know, changes weekly, so.
Okay, so just one of them for my own clarification. The comment was that you were working on compiling all people that would not be returning with reasons for why?
Mm-hmm.
So that won't be one report?
It can be, but just to say, like, as of June fifteenth, we can tell you. My guess is by July fifteenth, there might be some changes, and then August fifteenth. So there will be a compilation as of June fifteenth, but it won't be, I guess that's what I wanted to let you know, that if you can't say what you get on June fifteenth will be good for the rest of the year, so.
Okay. Just wondering on the update. So I will look forward to that. Thank you.
So I would say that all board members, parents, families would be indebted to Mr. Stino for twenty-nine years of service to our district. That is some dedication there. I know these two members are Whitnall graduates and they both had them, so maybe you could say something about them.
Yeah, I took him for programming. I think it was my sophomore year. Taught me C++. It was a great class, and he's done a lot for our district and a lot for our students.
Pretty much the same exact experience as him. Very knowledgeable. I know he taught the Cisco program as well. I did not have him for that, but I know that the students in that class enjoyed him as well.
Yeah.
So Mr. Stino, if you're out there listening, we're very, very thankful for your service to our district.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to echo that sentiment. I also had Mr. Stino.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quite all right. AP Calculus didn't do as well as I would like to have, but I put that more on myself than the instructor. And also, a very, a very, very talented basketball coach as well. Uh, item B, gifts and donations over one thousand dollars.
To approve item A?
Say again?
Shouldn't we be approving item A before moving on or voting on it?
Sure.
Well, I'm just asking because I.
Would there be a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, seven ayes, no nos, no abstentions. Moving on to B then.
All right, if you don't mind listening to me for a few more minutes, we will go through the Whitnall School District Gifts, Grants and Donations in amounts over one thousand dollars. To the district in multiple areas, in January of twenty twenty-three, a grant from PPG in the amount of three thousand dollars that was a grant written by a former employee. Drones were purchased at the middle school. Skills USA has provided funding for their leadership conferences and curriculum. For the beneficiary, Whitnall High School, in September of twenty twenty-two, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of one thousand forty-seven dollars and sixty cents, cameras for the yearbook students. For the beneficiary of the Athletics and Activities Department, in August of twenty twenty-two, from Whitnall Falcon Booster Club in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, it was a donation of fifty dollars per athlete for volleyball camp. In August of twenty twenty-two, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, two thousand and eighty dollars, pallet fundraiser startup costs for Skills USA and Red Cross Club. In March of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, two thousand one hundred dollars for twenty-two swim parkas for both the girls and boys swim teams. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, one thousand and fifty dollars, a state hotel stipend for Skills USA students. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which is fifty dollars per wrestler for the new wrestling mats. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, twelve hundred dollars, noted as fifty dollars per athlete for the cheer camp registration. And in May of twenty twenty-three, from the Whitnall, excuse me, Whitnall Falcon Booster Club, one thousand dollars sponsorship for the Whitnall Golf Outing. For the beneficiary of Edgerton Elementary School, in October of twenty twenty-two, from the Edgerton PTO, thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for playground equipment. In December of twenty twenty-two, from the Edgerton PTO, nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for alternative seating for the library. In April of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton PTO, one thousand one hundred dollars for author slash artist and residence. Over multiple dates, from the Edgerton PTO, one thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars for classroom parties held in October, December and February. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton PTO, one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for Earth Day programs. In May of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton PTO, one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars for the fifth grade field trip. Over multiple dates, from the Edgerton PTO, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for teacher-supported resources. And in April of twenty twenty-three, from the Edgerton PTO, seven thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars for music equipment. For the beneficiary, Hales Corners Elementary School, in September of twenty twenty-two, from the Hales Corners PTO, six thousand dollars for field trips. In June of twenty twenty-three, from the Hales Corners Elementary PTO, one thousand five hundred dollars for carnival. In March of twenty twenty-three, to the, from, from the Hales Corners Elementary PTO, three thousand dollars for artist slash author and residence. And in May of twenty twenty-three, from the Hales Corners PTO, two thousand dollars for teacher-supported resources. And those are the Whitnall School District Gifts, Grants and Donations in amounts over one thousand dollars.
Wow.
Do I have a motion to accept item B?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, seven ayes, no nos, no abstentions. Moving on to five, discussion with future action. Item A, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, student handbooks with our assistant principals.
The first thing that we did want to say is thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the board. We've had the opportunity a few times over the past couple of years now to share some of the collaboration that's been going on across the district between our buildings. So tonight, we get to speak on some adjustments that have been made to the student handbooks. We're going to start by talking about the elementary student handbooks as we're, Kim and I are going to kind of trade off sharing some of the adjustments. And really, there's not too many significant adjustments to the elementary handbook from last year. Most of it is kind of some updates in language, the first one being, based on some guidance from the state, you'll notice anywhere that it used to say parents slash guardians, that's been removed to just be parents now. So that's the first kind of significant update, I guess.
The second one you'll notice is that the word physician has been replaced with medical provider, which is thought that was more encompassing for the different types of appointments that students might be out for, especially when dealing with attendance.
And additionally, we made some updates to a lot of the links that were provided that would take the user straight to some of the board policy. In the past, a lot of the links would go just to our general board docs page, and so now a lot of those have been, or those have been updated to take you straight to the specific policy that was being referenced in the handbook.
And other edits you would see is just some language for wording, more for clarity and consistency throughout the document. So those are most of the changes and edits that you saw in the elementary handbook.
Moving on to the middle school handbook, obviously, a lot of the changes were just due to naming changes for courses, new links to our new course guide, which referenced the electives courses running the entire year rather than semester length. In addition, just some procedural changes in terms of having the kids put their backpacks in their locker this year. Previously, it's important to note that pre-COVID, that was a practice at the middle school of students putting their backpacks away and not carrying them around throughout the day. But obviously, with that, with the congregation in the hallways and multiple touchpoints, we tried to expedite that process through COVID and, but we would like to bring the backpacks or have the backpacks stored in the locker. So that's one of the practices that we are suggesting that change in the student handbook. In addition to that, just a, for bus transportation, just a policy change via first student about students no longer allowed to ride on a different bus even with parent authorization. The company's will, no longer willing to incur that risk. So that was noted in our transportation policy for the students. And on the same vein, for a technology, or sorry, not same, for technology, same expectations are applied to smartwatches as well as for cellphones in terms of our tech policy within the handbook.
I guess for the high school, the theme is, is kind of keeping up to the times and updating everything. So you kind of look at the stuff that we've changed, like, we have use of artificial intelligence software. Yes, that's what kids sometimes are using to write papers now, so we have that in there. Just updating for academic honesty, big thing for our English teachers this year, so making sure that was in there. Also, scrolling down here, we updated our, both our attendance policy and our health room policy to be in line with the middle school. That was something that Ryan and I felt we do the same of, so rather than having all this confusing language between the two different handbooks, making things the same and kind of streamlining that. So moving on with updating, we have also dances and just updating how we conduct our searches and for breathalysing random checks. That was something that we do and we made sure that we had in there to update. And kind of one of the last things, food and beverages in school, so students aren't permitted to order DoorDash, believe it or not, although I think they can. So that's a school safety thing, making sure that it doesn't come to all these different doors and also poor Judy doesn't get like thirty DoorDash orders, so. So that's, that's pretty much it. Really basic academic resource, too, the language change there because we have our teachers really stepping up to the plates and continuing to work on that to make sure that they are working with our students in study hall and it's not just students working independently. So they're checking in with students to make sure they're getting stuff done. And so the academic resource is a change in that name from study hall.
Anyone have any questions?
So why wouldn't we have the AI run through middle schools already and elementary? I don't, I don't know nothing about it, but at any age, person could start, I guess, right? So why would it just be exclusive to high school?
So it's a good question.
Well, I think that's something.
I think that's something that we could bring to our discussion for next year. Yeah, that would be my best answer.
Anyone else have any questions or?
Not at this time.
No, I just noticed that, you know, we had discussions about unifying things and making them look consistent. So all of that looks, I mean, like the graphics and the setup all looks consistent with each other, so that's, that's really nice to see. It's not, you know, and this has this in this section, this has this here, where am I going? So that's really nice, just a comment.
That's it. Treasurer McLean.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention that are, they sort of fit into the student handbook. One is that I wanted to look at our dress code, and our policy says something about guidelines for dress. I think I am interested in sort of strengthening that a little bit and keeping it in terms of guidelines for dress. So, so our policy refers to this and says that the superintendent will set guidelines for dress. I don't know if there, that really comes across in the handbook, but I would be interested in seeing that, and I guess I have some ideas that I might share between now and the next meeting about, about guidelines. We might want to take a look at some of the neighboring districts, Mesquite, New Berlin, to see what they do. I, I'm wondering about the cellphone policy. I saw that it's not just cellphones that are restricted, but also the, you know, the ear, the ear equipment, the kids. I was curious to know, and this would be interesting to find out the next time, because our handbook refers to, like, if you're caught with a cellphone infraction, you would have at some point a parent conference. And I wonder how our enforcement of that is going and how many parent conferences we've had around cellphones and are we enforcing what we're writing down in our handbook? And sort of an adjacent comment was I was curious if TikTok is, is on our network for students to be on, and I was considering making a recommendation to, to lock out TikTok from our network. So those are just some thoughts and putting out there for discussion. That's all I have.
So, I'm sorry, I was looking for where you were talking about Chat GPT. Did you say that was mentioned in academic honesty?
Academic honesty, yeah, that's one of the first pages, so that's page five.
So I have the document that says proposed changes, but I don't, would it be within those A, B, C?
Yeah, so the proposed changes, twenty-three, twenty-four, under academic honesty, it's in that first paragraph and it's actually G.
I see that. Yes, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, in my copy, it does not.
Yeah, I don't.
Have G. I just wanted to make sure because that is, is definitely prevalent. Is there a program that students papers, like, turn it in, like, where papers can be run through and then teachers can see? Is that available at the high school?
I'd have to get some more information, not because it's always changing.
Yeah.
Being kind of in a school year. I know, I've talked to a few teachers of what they're using and they do a really good job of, like, when I first heard of artificial intelligence, like, what is this?
Oh, so prevalent, yes.
Right, and like, they already kind of do a lot of it, they're really great with that, so.
Yes.
I'd have to get some more information about what they're seeing and kind of run the data on that, what is the big thing now. But Chat GPT is one of the big ones.
Yeah, and that's always changing to, to be more realistic, so that's going to be a sneaky one going forward. Thanks.
Miss President, Ryan?
Yeah, my comment or question was, I don't know that I have the one that has the proposed changes in it.
Same, I don't either.
The one that's in the agenda that I can see, some, just because I was going to look, but maybe that is, I mean, that can be addressed if we can take a look at the one or, I'm guessing we all see the same thing, right?
You're talking about the high school?
High school, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a letter G under, under that myself.
Okay. So that just might be it, okay.
I think when it was converted from the Google Doc to a PDF, the changes aren't there. It would be all on the side.
Oh, okay. It's a super important change. Oh, okay. It's a super important change.
Okay, I was like, I'm trying to follow along, but I'm not seeing.
I think you guys did differently than everybody else.
Okay, so then I guess I'll wait for that. A couple of things I'm sure you guys will go through. There are some, like, font references and some things are in gray and some things are in black. Those are just really small formatting things. I will echo the curiosity, I guess, about our phone policy at all levels and how that is addressed. I know, from what I was reading, just of the version that's in here, it's kind of not to interfere with instruction and that sort of thing. Is that up to the, I guess I'll pose it broadly and it's probably different at each level, but is that the teacher's discretion around whether or not it interferes with instruction? I'll start at the high school, I guess.
So the general rule we have now is that it can't be out during academic time.
Okay, I like that.
That's, that's the general rule now. That's something that, you know, we're gonna need as in the team to discuss more over the summer. Because that's always, I mean, I talk to APs also all over the conference and from the North Shore, so up there, and that's always something people are looking at.
Yeah.
So we keep going and keep trying to figure out what's gonna work the best.
Okay, okay. How about middle school?
Middle school students are allowed to be on their phones before the school day starts, during lunch and recess, and then after the school day ends.
So same thing, not in class at all?
Correct. Not, not during instruction, not even out in the halls during passing periods.
And then it's probably less of an issue, but probably still creeping in, right, at the elementary level?
It's less of an issue. I think we've seen smartwatches be more of the distraction. But if there is a student that we've had to talk to more than once, then we do get the parents involved to just let them understand how it is distracting them from their learning.
Our mantra is, like, off and out of sight during the school day. And so, like, not even during the lunch or recess periods or anything like that. It's just in off and out of sight.
Yeah, that's in age appropriate. I like that. Okay. I, I like that. I think that we, the more diligent we are, and I know it's an uphill battle in this technology day and age, but, you know, I know all the studies are showing that phones and social media sometimes at school cause more problems than they help. So I thank the teachers for their diligence around that and that we are keeping an eye on that as a district. And then I will wait to see the updates for the high school and no questions for that. And then the other ones looked like they were all in line, the edits. So no questions for the other levels either.
My only comment is, actually, really, congratulations to you guys for a lot of hard work that goes into this and a lot of forward vision that I know that Franklin has recently adopted a policy we already had, which is where the bus is an extension of the school and where that was something that they're really thankful for now, that you guys have already had in place prior to that. So I think that's tremendous that you have a lot of forethought, a lot of vision as far as where things can kind of go sideways and being, being proactive in that. So thank you for, for everything that you've kind of given us here today.
I have another question. So how, after the books are, you know, authorized and everything like that, how will changes be communicated to students? How and when will they be communicated? I know that, you know, with registration for the next year, there's all the online signatures and things like that. Will there be communication, onboarding of these new things, like, hey, kids, this year you can't order DoorDash, you know? And how will we inform them of these things? I mean, not just?
I can answer that real quick. At the high school, we usually do a welcome back video.
Sure.
And so, a couple of years ago, we had kids in it doing stuff. And so, I mean, there's always something like that. We kind of roll it out, make sure that that's understood. And then too, when, a lot of times, depending upon the thing, it's a learning experience rather than a consequence experience. If it's a brand new thing, because I won't work with the students, then that necessarily just come down. Part of them, if they tell me they don't know, although a lot of times they do. So, so it's kind of one of those things where, yeah, that's what we do.
Okay. And the backpack's gonna be a big change?
Yes. So during our flight times, which is a, you know, a common period, that there, in the beginning, there is going to be consistency where we roll out our PBIS lessons and SEL lessons. But generally, on the front end, that's when we communicate any procedural changes, those first two days. And we generally repeat those for a few days to let that sink in.
All right.
And we also have peer mentors coming in, teach lessons, or upperclassmen. So that way, it's kind of embedded with the students as well, students teaching with the students.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
I guess I, just a follow-up logistics. So I'm looking at the middle school schedule. I don't really know, are they, like, in halls, like, sixth graders are here, so like, four-minute passing time? They have time to run to their lockers without backpacks? Is that what, am I reading that right?
Correct. Yes, that there's a four-minute passing period between each period.
Are they running all around the building or are they generally in, like, a wing?
Sixth grade lockers are primarily on the first floor. If you've been in our building by the STEM area, they do have to go upstairs for their ELA and social studies classes. Math and science are predominantly right on the first floor. So, but without the size of our building, you pretty much can get anywhere. If you're not going to your locker in under a minute, it doesn't take too long.
The only thing I would, nobody asked about Core Four, so that would be questions to Jackie if anybody had questions on that. That's the fifth handbook that's here. So she oversees the Core Four, so I just wanted to share that. If anybody had anything they wanted to talk about there. But otherwise, I'm not suggesting you did. Most of it was technical changes and she met with all of our K4 teachers to work on those updates.
That one, I mean, I love, there's only, like, three things highlighted, right?
Yeah, it's connected to the elementary.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out, if you wanted to know that, that she would answer those, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could state your name, your address, and if you could keep your.
My name is Katie Rios, and my address is 5190 South Donna Court and Hills Corners. All right, ready? I'd like to address you today concerning pages five and six of the student handbook. Pages five and six cover the grading system at Whitnall High School. There are three sentences that describe the grading system at the high school. The system is not defined anywhere else in the Whitnall website except in the student handbook. I find the description of the grading system vague and totally inadequate for both parents and students. I began trying to understand the system a year ago. I went to fall conferences and asked every teacher if they could explain the grading scale to me, and none of them could explain it. So I asked the administrator in the room, and he kindly met with me and explained how the system works. The level indicator you see does not get entered into the grade book. The letter grade gets entered into the grade book. The infinite campus system then converts the letter grade to a standards-based grade, which you see is a number between one and five. The standards-based grade gets added into points, which we as parents see on IC as a point total. The teachers have a different view, where they see the points as a percentage and then a grade. Parents will also see the grade, but never the percentage. We need to make that calculation ourselves. If you're lost, I'll recap. The letter grade is input. It's changed to a standard of one to five, then to a percent, then back to a letter grade. At first, I was stuck on the percentage to get a certain grade. A 93.32 is the lowest A minus. A C is a 60%. But admin did the math and proved to me that this worked just like the scale we all grew up with. However, I went away unsatisfied. I met with admin again at a later date, and we talked for over an hour. He was convinced the system worked, and I was convinced it only worked in theory. I started watching my child's grades. I picked a class and worked out the percentage myself. My child was stuck at a B plus and could not seem to get an A minus. She received A minus after A minus after A minus, but the grade never seemed to change. When she received an A minus on her final project, a grade that was worth 1.5 times the normal test, we celebrated that this was it. This would bump her up, but it didn't. Her grade went from a 92.7, a high B plus, to a 92.702. She went up 0.002%. Why? Because every single A minus is entered as a 93.32, not even ever a 94 or a 95. That's impossible to enter. Every B plus is entered at an 86.66, not an ever, an 87 or an 88 or an 89. If you're following along, you'll see that when you put the grade in at the lowest value, you can never exceed that value. On one B plus and 100 A minuses will always be a B plus. You will get closer and closer to a 93.3, but you can never go over a 93.3 unless you exceed the A minus. One grade will kill your entire semester. One C will prevent you from getting a B in the class unless you exceed the B level. And that is what this handbook does not adequately describe. This handbook does not tell you how grades are entered into the system, how grades are calculated, or the percentage needed to receive the letter grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Juan Rios, also at 5190 South Donna Court and Hills Corners. What Katie, my wife, has explained is a very complicated system. Now, I believe the description in the handbook is a little too vague, or very vague, exactly because the system is so complicated. I have an undergraduate degree in engineering. I have a graduate degree in management. I don't understand it. And I don't expect that anybody else, less than that, will be able to understand it. Now, if I was to sit down and write down the calculations that are required to get a certain grade here at Whitnall, the parents and students would, would be reasonably expected to be upset. I would. Now, why do we continue to use a system that we cannot understand ourselves? That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. Why isn't the handbook clear and concise and transparent enough on how this is calculated? Kids don't know. The parents don't know. Many teachers don't know. Now, the system, I think we need, should be fixed and made more responsive. However, if we're going to forge forward and continue to use a system that is giving everybody trouble, then maybe we should make it clear in writing. That way, everybody will understand. Like, like she said, a fixed number is added to the system for every grade. It cannot vary. It cannot change. As my, as she described, a C is a three or 60%, not a 64, not a 3.2, nothing like that. You can't do that. That should be, that should be made clear to the parents and to the students. They should know so that the, the kids will know how much effort they need to put to improve their grade, and so that the parents can have a clear expectation. My own children, like she said, they had no idea how, how it works. They had no idea that in every grade is entered as a fixed number, because all they're, all they see is B plus, B, A minus. They don't see what it means. An A minus, in my view, implies a range of grades, of numbers, but that is not how it works. So I would urge you, administration, the board, especially the, the administration, make it more clear and transparent and concise so that the parents and the students can understand it. Thank you.
Moving on to item B, the 2023-24 Employee Handbook with Mandy Gregory.
Can I speak to, can I speak to you on that item?
Can I back it up? So, we, can we back it up to the parent concern?
We can't speak to the, we can't speak to it.
Can we ask questions?
But we can ask to have, can we have?
Under new business.
A report on the new business we can talk about?
That's where you would go. Yeah, that's where, that's where it allows the, is there not a new business on here? Yeah, so then it would have to be something.
I would like a report prior to us voting at our next meeting, addressing what we just heard.
I would echo that.
I think we can discuss a little bit in item number nine, the meeting debrief.
I, I would agree. I think there's a place to do that. I just, yeah, I agree. I just want to be careful. So Karen's right that we can talk about it there. Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I'm gonna let Mandy do most of the talking, or all of the talking. I did just want to say at the beginning that, as we go through that employee handbook, that we'll always have some changes and we always try to be proactive when, and foreseeing some of the things that, that maybe aren't clear. I do want to throw some kudos out while everybody, a lot of people had input in this, that Mandy finishing up her first year and Megan Jones, our payroll and benefits person, had done a really good job of going through this and as they experienced things, really taking good notes and making sure that we're getting things clarified so that we don't run into any issues in the future and will continue to, I guess I'll say, shorten the list for the employee handbook as we come in the future years for that. But again, knowing that there's a lot of input from a lot of people, trying to clarify some things and make things clear for employees.
Before we get started, just for clarification, so they're not strikeouts in the version we're looking at. It's a separate document, correct?
Right. So I did the summary document that has the changes in it. And then, within the PDF of the handbook, it's just noted or highlighted what we are wanting to change.
It is noted. Okay.
And then each of those changes from the handbook are referenced on the summary page.
Yeah, there's little, like, comment bubbles.
Yeah, there's a little yellow, a little yellow.
I don't know if you can see mine. They pop up on the side.
I see now. They're kind of like, yeah, like, hidden behind almost. I don't see them. Thank you.
Little floating comments on the side.
Referring back and forth. So this is helpful that they're right there. Thank you.
Yes. I tried to make it as clear and concise as possible. So for the handbook changes, a lot of it is just little tweaks to, you know, the staff-only page that no longer exists to now our flash landing page. So that's in that handbook page one. And then just changing some, you know, titles and things like that. So page four, just changing supervisor slash professional/technical to supervisor dash professional/technical and things like that. And just clarifying some of our verbiage throughout and just making sure that when an employee is reading it, it's very clear and concise to them and things like that. I don't know if you want me to, you know, unpaid versus to unpaid sick and things like that. So just that, adding that sick verbiage is, you know, important if employees aren't, not using the right, you know, time off code and things like that. And then just clarifying, I think, like, page 13, right? We just said no stacking breaks and lunches, you know, just so employees are aware of that. We changed to 24, pay to default to 20 on page 14. And then, my biggest, as you know, benefits, I'm all about the benefits, in our, like, leave and time off, I reshifted everything. I didn't give you guys the original, because to me, if I was an employee looking at it, you know, we started off with a bereavement, then there was a leave, and then there was vacation and things like that. So I really tried to put all the leaves together and then all, like, the time off together. So you'll see that's changed in there as well. And then we did some updated verbiage in the appendixes as well, just to include, like, does not or actual holiday versus scheduled holiday and things like that.
So a lot of these too are, again, like she mentioned, just to clarify interpretation. So we were very clear about that.
And I know there's probably still some formatting issues and font changes that need to go through and update. And I think there's one chart that the coloring is off a little bit still. So we'll obviously go through and tweak those as well.
So we'll go around, Ms. President, Rayner, if you'd like to start.
So the question about in pa, page 13, which is like, I think, page, oh, page 13 of the appendix, so page 43 of the document. The time worked pay rate for over 40 hours would only apply to hourly people, not salaried teachers? Or how does that? So it says the calculation of time worked over 40 hours per week does not include paid hours such as sick, vacation, holiday, or personal leave time. My understanding is that teachers are sort of salaried, but then support staff is hourly. That's probably who that applies to?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, true. And that's, it's in the administrative assistant appendix, which are paid hourly, which are hourly employees.
Okay. Yep, it's right up there at the top.
And again, we just did that to be, be consistent and follow, really, state, federal law, state law.
State law.
State law.
Okay, I think.
Clerk Scher.
You can pass me for now. I'm still kind of going through.
Treasure McLean.
So I'm just looking at the code of conduct, and I'm considering whether the board should add something regarding things like pushing a political point of view or soliciting specific student information, something prohibiting that. I'm not 100% clear right now on how I'd want to approach that, but it's something I'm thinking about. So I'm just putting it out there.
Those are covered under different policies?
Those are covered under different policies?
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, there's already conduct. There's, it's just not under Code of Conduct, Board Policy, those?
All right, I'll take a look at those.
I just don't have them right now. I can share them with you once I see them. But I do know that there's different policies.
There is a, there is a policy, but Board Policy. Which would I guess?
Is it referred to in the?
Like political affiliations. It just doesn't say that they can't, they can't be doing like political work or? And then it also talks about controversial subjects is the name of the other one. So, there's two different ones. If you're talking about like pushing, like if you're talking about within the classroom, that would be controversial subjects. If you're talking about campaigning or doing anything politically, that's covered under political affiliations and work with that. A lot of times that was connected with union work, but it also extends beyond that. So, those would be the two specific policies.
So, is that policy referred to at all in this employee handbook? As in, this is our policy and here's how you know about it, sort of a thing?
Well, employees are required to know all the policies that relate to that. I think the handbook didn't go and just like reiterate every single board policy. So, are you asking if it's specifically referenced in here? Yeah, I think just because there's so many board policies.
Yeah, I think maybe that one should be given. Climate and environment.
What?
I think it maybe it should be given the climate and environment. I think it might be worthwhile to elevate that to include it in the employee handbook. So, that gets read every and signed off on every year. I think it might be good to reinforce that. That's all I have.
Jesse.
No questions. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, I would just say if you're, if we're asking for something, ask for it. Let's not throw things out there and say, we think, or I think we should. I'm just throwing it out there. If there's something somebody wants that needs to be changed, we need to be clear about that. We can't just make the comment saying, we think we should do something. I don't have any personal comments or questions at this time. I'm just saying if we're going to give direction, we need to give direction here. We can't just throw things out there because then I don't know what we can expect from people to make changes. That's it for me.
I'm good.
My takeaways were the summary of changes was a fantastic document. It was very concise. And I thank you for the work and effort that you put into that. And it made the digesting of the handbook itself very, very easy to do so. So, thank you for the effort that you put into that.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Moving on to C, the 2023-24 Whitnall High School textbook adoption for AP Biology with Dr. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce you to Lucas Jensen. So, he's one of our science educators over at the high school. And what we're bringing tonight is the textbook adoption for AP Biology for the upcoming school year 2324. And so, what we're asking is that the AP course and exam gets updated periodically. And so, I will turn it over to Lucas to share a little bit about that background information and that process.
Hi, so in the notes in the board docs, they talk about when the AP standards were updated. I believe it was 2021. The current textbook that we are using was purchased for the 1314 school year. So, it's a little bit out of date. We're also hitting the 10-year limit where AP requires us to have a new textbook. And so, we, Mr. Wydock, Rob Wydock and I taught AP Biology this year. He's been teaching it for quite a few years longer than I have. So, I really relied upon him when we were reviewing the books. So, we looked at our current, compared the current book versus two newer editions. The Campbell book, which is what we currently use right now, they do have an updated version. It's very similar to what it is now, just updated to match the standards that AP now requires. And so, when we're looking at those three books, the differences that really came down to it were in the course, the text that we selected, this one, the things that stood out is the way that students have the ability to review for the test. So, in this particular class, this is a college credit class. It's essentially a college freshman class. We're really focused on that test in May. And so, the whole course is geared towards that. And we believe that this book provides the resources that best prepare students to do that. The teacher edition also gives the teachers additional resources to prepare their students as well. And so, that's why we came to the decision of using this particular book.
Sprecher. One question. Did you and or Rob read all the books?
So, cover to cover, no. He's been through this one more than I have. This one we received about a month ago until him and I were combing through it. We'd pick out parts. We did not read it word for word, no. He got this one. He received this one about two months ago. And he spent extensive time with this one. So, he read significant portions and went through significant portions of this particular book.
And that's standard practice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there like dozens and dozens of books that are specific to the AP course? Or they're only a handful like across the board considering the test is standard, I think, across the country?
I think every publisher has a version.
Okay.
Every textbook publisher does. There's quite a few.
But they're pretty much based off of, okay, the people that review the exams, here's how to really instruct. Like, that's how they come up out, usually with the material?
I believe so. I know that these four individuals who are the authors of the book we selected are either current AP Bio teachers or exam readers specifically. So, they, they know, they know what students need in order to be successful.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just from my understanding, the one that you're choosing has better resources for students and for the teachers?
Yes.
Okay. And how much of a lead-up does a teacher need to get acclimated with the new books?
So, it's a good question. I don't quite know. You know, last summer, when I, so I was assigned to teach a section of AP Bio last, this following school year, the school year that just completed. And I received access to the book over the summer. So, I looked at it over the summer. I know Mr. Wydock, if we were choosing these, he'd like to get them in his hand as soon as possible. He's the only one teaching it next year. And so, he would need, he would like time to go through it and really prepare for the students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask if we could have a sample copy of the book and a sample copy of the teacher's guide available for public review between now and then the next meeting, when it would be voted on? So, if that would be available in the district office, yeah?
I don't, we don't have a teacher's. They don't send teachers' editions until you purchase at least 30 copies of the student edition.
Fine. And then I was also wondering if the school provides any other like test prep books for AP Biology? Like, sometimes there's, you know, like Five Steps to a Five or different books that the kids might use in their test prep. Do we provide those to our AP students as well for home study or anything like that?
We don't provide any additional test prep resources.
Okay.
No, we don't. But we do have, we do use the College Board site. And so, they do have the different sample tests and exam questions that we work with our educators to use with our students. But that's actually unique about the recommended book, unlike the other books where they have specific test prep questions and advice to students of how do you answer, how do you respond? So, we have a lot more practice on the front end than after finding out while you're taking the exam.
Thank you.
No questions. I just appreciate the effort you put into bringing high-quality materials to AP Biology students. You want to keep up to date on that for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the middle book is just an updated version of the one that we've been using for several years?
No, we don't have a copy of that one here. This is the Mater book. This is from McGraw-Hill. This is from a different publisher. So, we were talking to them about a couple of different books. And so, this is, I had them send me a sample that we could look at as well.
But it doesn't have that extra test prep like the one on the?
No, the one we selected from Morris, they, at the end of every chapter, there's a specific, there's a normal chapter review section. But then there's an additional section that specifically is test prep. That text, these two texts do not have that.
Okay. And then, in the adoption form, are we ordering 30 so we get our? Are we only ordering 30 because there's only 30 kids who take it? Are we ordering 30 because we want the teacher, I mean, we want the teacher's edition? But?
I believe next year, there are 27 students registered to the class.
Okay.
So, 30 is to give us a couple extras and to get the teacher's edition gratis.
Okay. So, they don't like buy the book because they're an AP student? It stays, you know, and then another kid uses it the next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be registered with the new Destiny Management System. And so, they'll be issued the book at the beginning of the square.
Okay.
A lot of the materials that we've purchased recently, there's been a lot of online elements that have been included with the materials. Is there any online element with this choice?
This particular text and the cost that's in the proposal that you have right now does not include online stuff. This company does have online resources for an additional purchase. And it's a, you can do one-year, two-year, up to a six-year subscription. I don't know of any publisher that, for AP, that includes online as part of their cost. Everything is extra.
Is the cost, is the ROI for that online element is just way too great that we wouldn't see that sort of return on that investment?
We did talk about it. So, it did come up in terms of the ebook and access. Again, not having used it yet, there are a lot of components within that book to begin with. And so, again, being fiscally responsible on, we do feel that this fits the needs in terms of the curricular framework outlined by the College Board and feedback from the classroom educator who will be teaching. We thought this was the best proposal going forward, being cost-effective.
And as Dr. Williams said earlier, we already use an online source or resource from AP, AP Classroom. And so, with that particular program, you can issue students quizzes and videos made from AP, including practice tests. So, we do have an online resource already for them. It's just a matter of would we find value in another one? We don't quite know yet.
Okay. So, is that, but that is something that can be, we can be very agile as far as choices that we make of where, if we're not seeing the amount of returns through one platform where another one might be?
Once we have the books and how Cassie mentioned already, where we reuse them each year, that is something that we can add on at a future date should we want to go in that direction with online resources.
Okay. Thank you.
See how they do on the test and decide if they need more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D, five-year transportation contract. Welcome back.
Yeah, you're going to be sick of me by the end of the night.
Ah, never.
By the end of the night?
I did win the director's.
By the end of the night?
We do have a pool who gets to come up here the most every night during board meeting. I win tonight, so.
Okay, the first thing that I, well, the first of the next three things I've got is the bus, bus transportation contract. In there are included are the numbers as well as the actual contract. If you couldn't sleep at night and wanted to read through it, it was sent to, and we talked about this a couple of months ago, it was sent to the Greendale Law Firm and they looked through it as well. So, and it's my understanding that it has gone to both of those boards. All the rates were changed this year for this, for this contract so that we're all paying the same one at the three co-op schools, Greendale, Greenfield, and us. Also, just to point out, the other, the other attachment there, it does say, I think it's 8.7, sorry, 8.?
7.3.
8.73, thank you. We've done a really good job this year of looking at ways, because of some bus driver shortages, but also numbers of students and how we can kind of work with the private schools. And we were able to cut down several buses, so several bus routes throughout the year. So, that will help or has helped us. And when this was first done, it was based on where we started the year. But where we ended the year were a couple of different lower primary routes and secondary routes. So, that, I do project that that percentages won't be quite that amount. It should be a couple of percentage points less than that as an overall initial one to do that. And again, I'll have more information as we finish up the year and our final May and June billing to see what a really, the percent would be. But it won't be, it won't be quite that high. And again, for some really due diligence that we've been able to do, work with the bus company and the private schools, so.
Questions for John. We'll start here with the Vice President.
Why is, I know this isn't anything that you have any control over probably, but why is the increase so high next year compared to like, on the second sheet, the student rates or the first student rates for the company? It's like an 8% increase next year, but then the rest of the years it kind of evens out?
Right, so they had guaranteed that in their five-year to limit it to 4.5%. So, that was, we were looking at a set amount. But they, but in order to really look at all of our contracts, because we went from four in the co-op to three, and the fourth one that moved out was the largest. So, when they really went back and looked at it, they said, this is what we need in order to make, I guess I'll say make money or, you know.
So, we do high this year and then they level it out?
Well, it's just, the rate is the increase of what it was this year based on a one-year extension that we had done. They said, this is really what we need to do for your three groups because they lost that fourth co-op, the Franklin. They went to a completely different. So, they said, if we're going to keep the terminal where they have it and only service three of the four, and those three being the smaller of the, of those four, that's really what they needed. So, we knew there was going to be an increase, again, gas, transportation, labor costs, things like that. We knew there was going to be an increase, but they've committed to say it won't be any higher than 4.5 going forward.
And then one more question about noon rates. What is, are noon routes, what are those?
If we have, right now, special ed because we don't have a half-day route, so those would be special ed.
But doesn't apply to us currently?
Yeah.
Isn't it K4?
We don't run.
K4 doesn't?
Yeah, so it's, so the noon one is just special ed.
Well, there's.
If they're.
If there is one, correct.
It could happen to our entitlements to serve. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all for now.
Clerk?
No questions.
Clerk McLean.
How has First Student been to work with? Have they been a good partner?
They have. In my opinion, they've been great at customer service and having those and being willing to work with us about the bus routes. We've been, I guess, knock on wood, the school year's over. But we were very fortunate this year to not have driver, major driver issues like some of the other districts have. And again, luck of the draw, who our drivers were, who was gone, who wasn't gone, to be able to do that. And it's my understanding, and I have talked to the superintendent at Greenfield, because they did have some concerns about that. But sat down with First Student and First Student assured them, and she felt very confident about their assurances that going forward, because we went from four to three, that First Student is going to be able to keep the enough extra bus drivers to ensure that their coverage of the other three schools. So, they felt, we felt very comfortable about that. They felt very comfortable about that, and I do too as well, so. But to answer your question, very good customer service, in my opinion. Tom Donahue has been very good to work with. And that was part of the reason to keep with them. We know what we had and how it worked, so.
Thank you.
No questions here.
Yeah, as I was saying, I imagine a lot of it too has to do with the fact the board made the determination to work with them during COVID when buses weren't running and to continue to finance them whereas other districts didn't. And I think that built a lot of rapport with them because we did not have the issues that Greendale and Greenfield or you even saw on some of those community pages had. My question, obviously, I don't know that you necessarily know it, but how has Franklin been faring in this new environment?
Not good.
Not good?
Not good. Again, they're hoping that that'll change with Right Way when they go to Right Way.
Well, sure, I was just curious, because I know they made their decisions, but always curious how they're doing. But thank you very much for all the work you're doing.
So number four, escalation. So all things are, on the rate increases, all things, wages, I see gas is a little different, that's an up and down thing, but new buses, nothing like that is going to come back to us, that's all included?
Well, correct. If there is verbiage in there, that if we feel like there's a major change that could be negotiated down the road within the next five years, because again, nobody knows what's happening in five years. But as of now, no, that could be separately renegotiated, but no, correct.
And then force Marley. Isn't that where we had the problem with COVID? That wasn't that right?
That's correct.
It wasn't.
And I don't see, I don't see, unless we go to act of God, which it was, I would assume, nothing's changed there, and we got stuck for 80 grand.
Well, my understanding there's.
In my opinion, we got stuck for 80 grand.
Quinn, which part, which part are you talking?
Number 10.
Okay. Thanks.
Now, Kevin has a different idea, and we paid the money, and they're all happy.
I didn't vote for that one.
I'm just.
I was gonna say, yeah.
So, but we, and maybe we don't have depraved information, but I don't see anything changed in there to cover that. So to me, it's, I don't want to say vague, but it's not in there, unless it's considered an act of God. And then, why wasn't it covered previously?
When you say it wasn't covered previously?
Well, this is to protect us, right?
Correct.
Number 10, right?
Yep.
So, but it didn't protect us then?
Well, we talked to both of them, and I guess I thought that was, that was explained in there.
And I, through the last, through the COVID, I learned, as some of us have, that this is a different type of business, and we have to underwrite them basically to keep them going, because of the need to have them, and we're on the wrong side of the stick. I get it. I don't really get it, but I got it.
Right, I, now I can't, because we, last time when I brought this, the first time, or a couple, a month or two ago, to talk about going through this and going with them, I'm sorry, I should have had that.
And I also realize, we don't have many games and talent to play with.
Correct, correct. I mean, really, we didn't have, we only had two people that really did turn it, and you're right, if we don't own our fleet, that's part of that. But everybody, not everybody, the people we talked to and the two groups that did put in there are, like you said, have to make sure they cover themselves in an event like that. It was my understanding, and again, I'll try to find it either before the end of the meeting or before, to see, but it was my understanding, when I talked to Jonathan Mitchell, who was kind of leading this, that there was a partial coverage to say that we would be 50% liable for that, if something like that ever happened again, whereas Right Way was pushing for 100% to be able to do that.
Where is it?
Yeah, again, I.
That's a concern to me.
Yep.
Because what it was, was the whole issue originally was, there was nothing in there. We had no obligation to pay anything.
Right.
But then it was the conversation, maybe not as direct, of, well, when buses come, we don't know if we'll be able to get everybody's buses, is kind of how that conversation went. And then most other contracts, I think us at the time, we were one of the few that didn't have that in the contract. Other districts were still paying, I think upwards, some of them had 100%, that they started to pay for buses, even though they had no buses for an entire year. We didn't have that, and I think we had gone to a 50% after that, is what was negotiated in the next contract, and I don't know if it's not specified in there somewhere, but I thought that was where we were at.
Number 30.
Number 30?
Yep. Way towards the end, number 30, for non-weather, is the contract to 50% of its daily.
Yeah.
Number 30?
Correct. 100 days closed?
Yeah. Because I'm pretty sure at the time, when we came back to the next round of contracts, there wasn't a company anywhere offering zero. Everybody was much, much higher, and they, we came to the 50% agreement at that time.
Well, well, I would like to have that in any contract that I ever sent out. I understand that we have to, we have to do it. So I'm glad it's there, that's all.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else to say, so. Thank you.
John, do you want to project her?
Yes, please. Thank you. You have the actual preliminary budget in there. Most of the numbers are real consistent, this is preliminary, which I'll talk about, so I'm not going to go into the numbers right now, but we can talk about those afterwards. But I really want to kind of just give you a little bit of timeline and then some information about the preliminary budget. So again, June will pass, will be the passage of the preliminary budget, which again, we'll talk a little bit more about. July 1, the new fiscal year starts. Hopefully, we'll have a state aid, stated estimate by then, and again, talk a little bit more about that coming forward, about what that looks like. August is the passage of the published budget for the budget hearing, which takes place in September with the annual meeting, and then in October, at the end of October, I'll come back to you with a final budget, after everything has been set, claims, and we have numbers, and so that'll come back in October after the annual meeting. The other thing too, is with the biennial budget, this year's a little bit more difficult because we don't know, whereas next year will be the second year of a biennial budget, and things have already been set, so that makes things a little bit more clear. So creating this budget, I did talk to some of you about what we've done this past year, and we've done for the count numbers, and cleaned up Skyward Employee Management Module with a lot of help from HR and the business office to really clean up the things that we have for our employees to know how the benefit, salary benefits, and that's a big, as you know, 75 to around 75% of the budget is salaries and benefits. So the more we can clean that up and get that as accurate as possible, that really does help with budget forecasting. So we've been able to do that, work again with principals, directors, superintendent, supervisors, to really sit down and go through. We had good numbers this year, where things were coded in the right accounts for the full year, and being able to get a much better picture of where we've been and where we're going. So the preliminary budget is called the preliminary budget for a reason, it's preliminary. It's based on what we know now. When I turned this in, we didn't even have really initial numbers from the governor and the legislation, which again, right now, some of those have been talked about, they haven't been finalized, but we've been talking about. So it's not required to pass the preliminary budget, there's no state law in that. We do it because we want to make sure that you have an idea of where, and we all have an idea of where we're going next year, but it is preliminary. And again, in order to just start, begin with new expenditures on July 1st, to have a preliminary budget in place. We obviously know that many things will change, and we'll get final numbers as we get final title allocations, final state aid numbers, final enrollment, both resident and open enrollment, as we know that changes, staffing changes, which we talked about earlier tonight too as well, final current year revenue and spending will get finalized after we finish paying all the June expenses and getting all the final revenues and distributions from state and federal, and then final grant claims. So the budget sheet comparison that you have attached to that does show last year's audited numbers, so those are last year's final numbers. It shows this year's current budget, which we started the year with as a budgeted numbers, and then next year's preliminary budgets are the three columns that you'll see in there. It does list the funds there that you can see, it does combine some of those numbers, just so you know, 21 and 27 are together, 38, 39 are together, and 41 and 46 are together, but it does combine those, some of those when it's listing that form that DPI has us use. So right now, using this preliminary budget, again, this was done prior to, I guess, Thursday, or I'm not sure when it kind of came out or was talked about, if that was Thursday or Friday, but these were done, and I'm proposing a balanced budget, where Fund 10 revenues equal Fund 10 expenses. And I did use 250, 350, somewhat conservative, I guess I'll say, as it turns out, but I did up it to 40% for special ed reimbursement. Right now, it's about 30%, and we were all kind of hoping that we would jump up. I know we had a much higher ask than that, but I was hopefully optimistic on that. Right now, based on Thursday's news, it's going to be 325, 325, and 33.3. So while I was under budget on the per pupil, I was over budget on the special ed reimbursement, so kind of figuring out exactly how that will work out. Based on our special ed costs, I'd rather have the 40% and 250, to be honest with you, but. So in this budget, obviously, there's a couple revenue and expense bigger considerations when I, when we're doing the preliminary budget, because we don't have all of the revenue and expenses in for the year. There's a lot of things at the end, which we'll talk about, that's still left to come in. So right now, some of the largest expense considerations is staffing, obviously. We don't have final raises set, again, this was prior to Governor's Budget, but we have the resolution that was there, and those are the numbers I used when doing the preliminary budget. And we don't have replacement costs of staff because of turnover, resignations, retirements. If somebody at higher salary retires and we replace them with somebody lower, or vice versa, we don't have those numbers in here yet. So we did use the best that we, best that we could with our forecast. Health insurance increase, uses changes, while the insurance increases in here, we did budget for that. We don't know, I don't have, I don't have the numbers because of open enrollment, if somebody switched from single to family or family to single, so I just have no way of knowing that at this point. Also, the final usage in June, some people will say I'm close to my deductible, and I'm wanting to finish up, use June to go use what I can do, what I need to do, so sometimes that comes back as a higher, higher thing, so we don't have that yet. And then the special ed transfer from Fund 10, Fund 27 has not been finalized yet, but we know that that's going to be a big chunk of funding. And then again, we talked about open enrollment. Largest revenue consideration, again, open enrollment, membership counts, so that's our resident as well as open enrollment, and the special ed reimbursement rate, which we now have a good idea about, which will help, but I was a little over when I did that. So, and then final ESER fund usage, and where we're at with that. So budget factors, what we, when I looked at doing the preliminary budget, I put in the increase of 250 and put that in the revenue limit worksheet, which is very detailed. It does give us a slight increase of total revenue limit, about 220,000, even with 250 per pupil, and that has something, a lot to do with our base, our base revenue from the prior year and things that changed from that, that it didn't give us a true dollar for dollar increase in the revenue limit, which, to be quite honest with you, I was very disappointed in when putting the numbers in. Reduction in state aid of about 1.3 million, and part of that was the penalty, based on the large defeesence that we did, and then also a slight decline in resident enrollment, as well as our three-year average dropping, our base average dropping for three-year enrollments. We had a decrease in declining enrollment exemption, so while we're not declining much, it did do a pretty good, take a big, pretty big chunk of our decline in enrollment exemption because of the way it uses three years average, and we had a very large number drop off. So that reduced that amount. And then reduction in state aid, obviously, revenue limit is state aid and property taxes for the most part. If our state aid dropped, then our property taxes will have to make the difference up, so there's an increase in that amount of about 1.5 million dollars to offset that amount. So you can also see the bottom of the numbers that will decrease preliminary projections of a decrease of an overall levy amount, tax levy amount, I'll say significantly, and part of that is because we're not defeesing what we did as much as we did last time. So that was a pretty good chunk. Oops. All right, thank you. So current year status, again, there's still a lot coming and going, June is very, very, very busy, and so we'll continue to do that, but these are some revenue and expenses that won't happen until, aren't happening now or later in the month, and again, we talked about some of these. We won't get our final tax and state aid payments, our summer payroll for teaching staff, we'll get those finished, and again, as you know, some of those get, I think that's a very big payroll, because some of those staff are getting four paychecks to get them through July and August, so that's still doing. We get final payroll for coaches, advisor, teacher subs, the overloads, trainings, et cetera, teachers on call, final payments, things like that. Our final grant claims, which we talked about, health insurance talked about, some final projects and purchases are getting done before the end of the fiscal year, and then final billings for some larger ticket items, final payments for that. So the initial projection is to have some funds available to, in order to move some things, or to move some budget money into Fund 46, because we didn't originally at the beginning of the year, as you remember, we did do a budget deficit. We didn't budget, I didn't budget anything for Fund 46, and then hopefully have some money to cover what our auditors would like us for, because we're self-funded, to put something in restricted, whether that's move up current or be able to add a little bit more for that. We'll provide more information next month, both on kind of where we're finishing up, but also an ESER update, roughly our six-month ESER update next month as well. Any questions? I know that was a lot. Oh, again, just going to do the numbers, again, I won't go line by line, but you got that in your packet. A couple things, really looking, food service did pretty well again this year, which we were scared, scared about, we were a little worried about because of free, going away from free meals last year, and this year they paid for, but they did really well. Otherwise, everything else was, again, pretty consistent in where we thought last year's budget and this year's budget, next year's budget will be somewhat consistent. And we know these are going to change, but as a projection.
So with the $50 per per pupil on the low side, and 7% on special education on the high side, your estimates, you haven't run, you haven't seen if it's going to be a wash, up and down, if that all holds true?
Correct, when I did this, that wasn't, I didn't have those numbers on Friday, I didn't.
You haven't had a chance to?
I really, I really haven't, again, with about, well, we're about a $3 million, $3.8 million fund 10 transferred to Fund 27 to cover those costs. 30, we'll just call it 5%, well, 3%, 3% times 4 million would be 1.
2.
What's that?
1.2.
3, no, that would be 30%, would be 1.8. Help me out here. 3% of 4 million would be, that would be 1.2.
360.
120. 3 times 4, 120,000?
20,000.
20,000, yeah.
You're just off on the, with the zero.
Here's a zero there.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Thanks.
So that, you know, again, that would increase 120,000, whereas the extra $50, by putting that on there, that's several hundred thousand. The problem with that is we don't get, it's not a wash, and I'd have to go back and put it in the revenue limit worksheet.
That's my, that's my.
But it should be more, it should be more than that, to get the extra.
And are those spendable dollars?
Well, the 220,000 is, and the extra percentage is, both will be, because that's less that we should have to transfer over to Fund 27 now.
Right. So then on page, I don't know what it is, one of three, I guess. Yeah, on expenditures, instruction, is that the increase you're projecting for raises from 13.3 to 14.1?
Where exactly are you?
General fund, total revenues, expenditures.
Function 100.
Function 100,000.
000 project. It's four lines up from the bottom.
Oh, gotcha, sorry, 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 instruction. So that would be salary and benefits is what falls in there, correct?
So then, then the following line on 200,000, it's a decrease for support service?
So the instruct, for 100,000, it would be salary and benefits for, well, for curriculum, so for educational staff, where the 200,000 would be for support, support.
Well, I'm wondering why it's a decrease?
I'm going to be honest with you, I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that.
I understand these are projections.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a bit concerning to me. And are you suggesting any amounts for Fund 40? Fund 41 and 46?
So, Fund 41, yes. Fund 46, not, not, not included in here yet.
Okay.
At this point.
All right.
So.
That's all I have.
Kevin, stick away. Because it leads into this, I know you mentioned, we won't know because healthcare costs go in June, at, through May, do we know what percentage we are at of use?
So, the last one was about 94%. I would say that was probably, and that's, again, we're struggling getting some information from Anthem still, but, but I think that's pretty ballpark, maybe, maybe a couple, but, but, but less than 100, yes.
Okay, but is it based off of if June's going to be a heavy month, it's likely we're going to come pretty close to that, or maybe a little over?
Very well. And again, those are projections.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yes, if that's, that trend holds.
That was my only question. Thank you.
No questions, just want to say, a lot of these things are in flux, so I appreciate the information you can provide us, because I know that's a lot, and it's just going to ramp up more. So, thank you.
Treasure McLean.
I think that I am okay for now. Thank you.
Court chair?
No questions.
Question about the funds. So, the instructional, instruction function 100 in Fund 10, and then, the Fund 27, does special ed instruction come out of Fund 27?
Can you ask that again?
So, we have instruction as a line item in Fund 10, function 100, 000.
Correct.
But then, just because this is my first budget, is, and Fund 27 is special ed funds? Do, does instruction for special ed come out of Fund 27?
It does.
Okay.
Correct.
And this, the budget for 23, 24 includes that halftime person that we just approved?
Correct. Prelimarily, yes, it does. It was included in there. Correct. Yes, I did. What's that?
Do you want to cover that there's a transfer that we have to make? Cover everything through the grant, or something like that? We have to transfer money.
From 10 to 27, you mean?
Right. I just wanted to be clear that, like, we don't get enough money to cover all.
So, what you're seeing for the 1000 instruction under Fund 27, that isn't all of special ed?
We pay more out of.
Yes, correct.
Function 100 to cover.
Oh, I see.
Fun 10, not function 100, because that is irrelevant. Those functions exist in multiple funds.
Okay.
So, what we're saying is that all of Fund 27 is special education, and so, what you're seeing there for instruction, that won't be, will actually have to take out of the Fund 10 instruction, because we have to transfer over, because there isn't enough to cover all the special education costs.
But it comes out of that line item, though?
It would, out of the, that one that you said, the 14 million, correct.
Okay.
That's one reason why we pushed our legislators so hard to.
Yeah.
Increase our percentage of reimbursement.
So, went from 30 to 33 preliminarily?
We want a lot more than that. We want 90.
We wanted 90, and we're hoping for 60.
Vouchers, private schools get 90% reimbursement. So, there is a promise from the state legislature since the beginning of time to get two-thirds, and we're still, I mean, we got 30 right now, so they moved it to 33. It's nowhere near. And that's, that's where, in a district like ours, that has a higher special education, it hurts us in Fund 10, because if we didn't have to take out of our Fund 10 to balance that, we would have more Fund 10 dollars that we could use for non-special education costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm hopeful, I guess, with intervention and things, as we go through, that we can make sure that all the kids identified for special ed with, with stronger core instruction may, I mean, it won't solve all of it, obviously, but that we can not have so many kids being identified every year necessarily. Because then they have the.
Wait, what is?
So, there is, kids get identified as special ed, there's a process about how they get identified, and then, sometimes it is, depending how we do intervention, they may not respond to certain interventions, and then they would qualify for special ed. If we go back, what we're doing with the curriculum hopefully could address some of those kids needing all those tiers of intervention, and potentially, not necessarily, but potentially could address some of the identification of kids, as it relates to responding to intervention from core instruction, that we may not have a ton of, you know, where we have, as described in a district like ours with high special ed numbers, just putting that out there as, well, remains to be seen with the new.
Yeah, and that would be accurate, when you're looking at like a disability area, like specific learning disability, less applicable to some other disability areas, where there still might be a learning need, but the disability is related to other factors like behavior, attention, autism, deaf, hard of hearing, those areas.
Absolutely, yeah.
I want to say, I don't know that the majority of our costs that we spend in special education are related to learning, well, that's, okay, well, that's kind of what it sounded like you were saying, that we might see some budget alleviation if.
We might.
We did better, but you're implying that that's a strong chunk of the budget.
Not implying anything.
That's, okay, you're, so you're stating it, then, I guess?
I'm, I said not necessarily, but possibly.
Yeah, there hopefully would be a correlation between, you know, interventions and, you know, looking at certain disability areas, absolutely.
Just making sure we're clear.
Yep.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you stay put, and we'll move on to item F, the piano purchase authorization?
So, as again, we've talked about, I think we brought it, and at once for sure, if not twice, that we, that we were looking at replacing our five-year-old piano that's, that's in the auditorium. So, we felt like, well, we're still finalizing some things, obviously, we feel like that we'd rather, we'd be able to do it out of this year's funded, funding instead of next year's. We also, as I've included, the music department has done some really good research previously, with no expectations at, at that time, and found out that when they go and look for one, it may be gone the next day. And I, my understanding that this happened before too, like with the snowplow truck or whatever. And so, it is, things like that are just difficult to be able to say, we've got some time, let's go pick one out, and then go to two board meetings, and a month later, hope that that same piano is there. It's just not realistic. And so, as you look at the piano replacement research that they did, there was a pretty good range. They wanted the 150, and I wanted the 10. So, we felt, we felt, found a happy medium where we felt, and again, this is your, this is your decision. I, I can play chopsticks, but that's about as far as my expertise goes about what we need. But they did a really good job, and we had several conversations with Charlie and music department, and really looked at that. And they did, they did a good job of going to multiple vendors to get, to look at different ones. So, right now, the, I guess, the, the ask was for you to approve 55,000, but I'm, I'm, that's open, I guess, to be honest with you, if you feel that, but that we felt like that was, there was a couple of them in there that that would have fallen in there and been a, a very good instrument to be able to do. And so, again, with solo ensemble coming up, we know we need to replace it. The tuner said, this is it. It's not going to, we can't tune it and continue to tune it any better. So, we know we need one, you know we needed one. That was, that conversation has happened. So, I guess, that's, that's the ask, that, that we can have that authority to go out there and be able to do that, and then at least say, this is where we're at, and be able to commit to that, because they won't hold it for us.
Is, is their top, their top choice not applicable, just because of the cost?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No, I would also say it's size. That size does not fit in the auditorium. So, when you get to the, the grand, grand piano, it's actually four feet too long. And so, they realized that, they said it had a nice tone when playing it, but the reality is, it actually would not fit on the auditorium, because then it gets into spice, space comparison. So, there was a little bit of that, yeah.
But mostly the, in my opinion.
But they, so they played all of them as part of their register?
Correct. Yeah, they did a really good job of doing this and rating them.
The other part to say is that currently, the piano resides on a stand that moves it around, and they would be able to reuse some of that piece of it, and can use the bench. There's nothing wrong with the bench that's there, it's totally usable. So, part of that is, you know, some of those other pieces that they can reuse, and the size of how it fits into nooks when you're, because I would say, while solo and ensemble is a piece of it, it's really about concerts and musicals and those types of things, where it's getting used a lot more than just a one-day thing. So, I think that it's really about our needing that instrument here, yeah.
One more question. I'm guessing they have different lower stand, like, for like classroom, they probably have, they don't have, moving that piano in and out of classrooms, right?
Correct. Those are practice rooms and practice rooms. Yep, this is the one that's on the stage.
Yep.
No questions.
I'm just amazed that there's a used signway from 1931 on this chart. And I had sort of the same question as Cassie, is like, how, how often does this piano get used? So, I'm imagining that the music classes sometimes go into the auditorium, or we have classes in the auditorium as well, that would use that piano regularly. I think it's, makes sense to, to buy a new piano.
Again, it did last 40 years. We take care of it.
I see two examples on here that are in the 60,000s, and so, I, I wonder a little bit about those. What are we tapping at 55?
I, I think it looks like, you know, you get a few new ones in there, or some really nice used ones at that price point. I know that one of them falls lower on the list, but like, number four on their list is slightly under that, but I guess it really, I mean, you said they, they fluctuate as to what's there, so there may be another new one that's closer to that price range. So, I, not knowing a whole lot about these, that seems reasonable based on what's provided here.
So, they're happy, they're content with that negotiation that you guys had, between the music people and you and Charlie, that they're content with the 55, like, thousand?
Well, again, I, I think it depends on what's out there at the time.
I meant like, yeah.
But.
With that option, I guess, is what I was saying, but it sounds like it is. Okay, thank you.
My only concern is the race to get the money spent prior to June 30th into business, right? And because we want, we have money in this year's budget, we want to do that. But I saw you write something saying that we couldn't nagle that?
Correct, correct. We just go into 10, and then write out of 10 the following fiscal year. Fund 10.
So, do what?
Put it into Fund 10 if we, if we can't finalize that, or get that done, and then pull it right back out of Fund 10 in July.
Instead of putting it in the balance, put it in there?
No, it, it would, right, that money would be added to, to the Fund 10, Fund balance.
Okay.
And then pulled right back out.
So, that, that would be my concern, that we don't, we don't rush.
Correct, yeah, not for, not for this.
To get it this fiscal year.
Correct. If we do, if we can, great, but if not, then that's where it would go, and then.
And the funds will still be reserved for.
Correct, exactly.
Thank you.
Here, one more.
I don't know anything about pianos. Can you like negotiate these prices like a car? Like, if it's listed at 50, could you go, or not?
Well, that's a great question, and I, and I, to be honest with you, I don't 100% know, but I also know that, that these are a lot like cars now, that they're high demand, and they don't stick around a lot. So, I don't know that, there's a lot of wiggle room.
Okay, okay.
And if there's used versus new versus, yeah, so, maybe a little bit. Or again, there's some things I could cover, or a lift, you know, or a, sorry, I don't even know what they're called.
We're using the one that we already have, remember?
Yeah, but those little things, there's other, there's other things that, that, that we could maybe say, well, will you throw that in, or will you, you know, things like that. So, a lock, I think, was one, or, you know, whatever, so that.
Yeah, like just that there are, be under, assuming any of them are still there, right, for the next few weeks, right?
Right. Well, yeah, but this was back in February, March, so probably, correct. Yeah, when we first brought it to, at that initial.
This was to get a ballpark, like, where were we even looking? And you can see, there's a range. So, they sort of went out and did this initially. So, we realized if we're going to move forward, like, we've got to at least have a ballpark, and then go out there and be able to make a purchase pretty quickly on it. Because it, and I think that's what we were referring to. We had a snowplow, same thing was happening by the time Todd brought it to us, it was already sold off the lot, either at Holt's, or we ended up doing it. So, part of this is like, let's get a ballpark and authorize a purchase, and then, yeah, move on it.
Yeah.
Pretty brutal.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Our goal is to have it here in the time for school to start, so we have a little flex time in the summer to work it out.
Well, that's my, yeah, hope, is, yeah, if we do it now, that that would be. And I guess, going back to your question too, I guess I didn't come right out and say, hey, this is what, so, I think this is, this is kind of what I said I was bringing, but it wasn't, well, can we get 57, or can we get, you know, that's too, well, they're never going to say that's too much.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
But again, it was a kind of that, what we talked about and said, but, that's up, in the end, it's up to you.
As long as we get the rest proof.
The undercoat?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think you're rid of me the rest of the night.
Moving on to discussion, and plan to replace consulting services. This was asked by Board Member Burnett.
So, since we voted to eliminate this service, I'm asking the board, is how are we going to replace it? How are we going to give guidance to administration to fill that gap that what this consulting service was servicing?
I think we have a, can I speak to that? Can I speak to that? Or we want to go in order, or? I think we have a qualified CNI director who would, that would fall under her purview. If we have 10, I think it's 10 total coaching staff, that could definitely be filled in-house. The mentoring, coaches double as mentors, definitely an in-house thing.
I'll just echo that and agree that I think that the way this works is that sometimes proposals come forward, and they're approved, and sometimes proposals come forward, and they're denied. And then, the administration, you know, has the creativity to work with, you know, the conditions that we have to solve the problems and meet the needs of the students. So, I would look to the administration to be creative, and look through what resources are available.
Is she correct in the amount of coaches that are on staff?
Two are through Esser dollars, specific to early literacy and phonics. So, we have two literacy implementation specialists and eight coaches. I mean, there's two at each building, a literacy and math coach at each building.
Kevin, do you have anything to add?
Well, I'm just, well, I'm curious on your thought, and do you know what they do all day? Because you said we have 10, and you're implying that you must know their work routine, that they have enough hours to fill, and enough specialized knowledge to go into these other areas. And then, I think we also have the mixed message of, we're then taking away those hours from the other people who had stuff allocated toward them versus people who did, and we chose not to give it to them.
So, absolutely. Being a coach for 10 years, I do have some expertise in that. Also, I currently work with a coaching consultancy, and I can, can take a look at like other districts, how they work in-house with their coaches. Part of a job, a coaching position is absolutely able to mentor new staff. In fact, it's sometimes preferred by teachers, because you build that trust. When you're in a position as a coach, it can take up to a year to build trust. And if we have, we do, like, if you look in other districts, we have a generous amount of coaches within our small district. So, I mean, we definitely could do a time study where they spend their time, but I can supply you with examples of where I spend my time as a coach, how it looks, how it could look. But definitely, if you look at Edgerton, how small of a building that is, and with the coaching staff that we have, I, I bet in their schedule, they could definitely work out some mentoring.
Okay, so, I guess, I'm not asking about how you do things, I'm asking about your knowledge of specifically how we are doing things, because you're implying that.
Well, I did spend my time here in the district as a coach as well.
Okay, but when was that? Was that the last couple of years?
Three years, yeah.
Okay. But now, we're in a different position, we have different curriculum, we have different staff. You're saying for a fact that we are overstaffed in these positions?
Nope, I didn't say that.
Nope, that's, that's what you're impl, okay, you're implying. Nope, that's, that's what you're implying, okay, you're implying that you know, let me finish talking, you are implying that, because you said, I know that we have ten or eleven coaches, and then they can fill that void. That means that they have openings in their current job where they're not working, that they can then use that open time to fill that void.
Yeah.
So then you are implying that.
I'm not implying that, I'm saying that.
You're saying that as a fact.
If I took a look at all other districts, our size, and the coaching staff that they work with, also include my experience in coaching here in the district, and then also include some of my experiencing, experiences working with coaches currently, I definitely think, I mean, I don't really need to speak to that because it isn't my job as a board member.
But you're saying it is because you're giving us your knowledge of that, and you're talking about other districts. I'm specifically asking you what you said, and you said it, but you won't say it clearly.
I don't think that's how we work.
I see control on this?
Let him finish.
You're saying, and you said it already, I just want you to be very clear with what you're saying. You said, we have to use however many, you said we have coaches, whether those ten or eleven, you said, we definitely have room for them to cover that. That is implying that they have room in their schedule, that they can fill that gap of the consultative services that we are no longer providing. That imply that either we are overstaffed or they have a lot of openings and they're not working a full work week, they can use that open time, they're not actually working, they should be doing this.
Would you like to respond to that?
No, I don't, I don't.
Can I always check the tape later?
Do you have something to add?
I'm fine, thank you.
Jesse, is there?
I think it was mentioned that, that service provided coaching to areas outside of the normal learning experience, and how that is hard to come by, and that's what they specialize in. So that would be my concern in that area of these people are losing coaches that specialize in those areas that although we have great existing staff, they may not be as good as somebody that specializes in that area. I am concerned for those staff and not getting the resources that they need and those coaching opportunities.
Do you have data or surveys that suggests that? Sorry.
I'll go next, so.
Do you have anything else?
I would say that just because I'm qualified to do an oil change on a vehicle, I am not qualified to work on the engine of the vehicle, or if it is a gasoline-powered engine, there are people who specialize in diesel engines. There's not one person that can cover everything.
Yes, it's actually called.
Hang it, hang it.
Okay.
We've been provided with information that says otherwise at previous meetings. That's what I'm going off of.
So I'll reiterate that the board already made a vote on this, and that during our initial discussion, there were board members who asked for evidence of the value brought, and evidence of results, and that, you know, one thing that I saw was that we, I did not feel that I was presented with enough evidence of results positively impacting the district. And so I just want to reiterate that, and that the vote was already taken. So I have confidence in our administrators that they have resources, maybe not exactly the resources that were asked for, but I feel like as a district, we are strong and we will be able to handle this.
Sure, do you have anything to add?
No.
My commentary on plan to replace, I think the board providing guidance around this is a slippery slope. Then that opens the door that we can manage the workload of people in administrator roles. So I think that we wait and see what the administration wants to bring forward, to say these were the gaps, and go from there. What we, as Karen mentioned, we were not able to see evidence of what this person was doing, and we haven't heard back about it since. So I would say that we wait and see what the needs are. And what we did see preliminarily is that the, certain types of work that this consultant was doing wasn't renewing staff to our district. And so my position on this is that we let that come forward if there's a gap, and we analyze it and make a decision based on that. And I would guess that we don't want to.
Yeah, possibly we do a time.
So, I mean, unless the board disagrees that we should be involved in defining that, which, I mean, we can, but I think that's a slippery slope that administrators probably want those roles and role clarity to stay that way. But I do think it's our role as a board to make sure that what we are being asked to approve can be demonstrated of value or non-value, and that we have priorities around what we want our coaches to accomplish, whether they're in-house or out of house, and that we say, hey, did the coaching that we paid for, whether as staff or as a consultant, achieve what we wanted? That should be easy to prove or not prove, and then we go from there.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm not talking about voting, that the whole purpose of this is what is, or what is the plan going forward? Because they told us where the gaps were and what they needed, we said no. Information could have had, we didn't table a vote, we rejected it, so that's a moot point. But I think the point is, there are other items that they were doing besides what there's the focus on, or like we, Cassie mentioned. I believe social studies, if I'm incorrect, and social studies was the main area of subject matter expertise, and that doesn't mean somebody in math coaching who knows our curriculum very well should be instructing our social studies instructors on how to do their job better, how to deliver curriculum or other things like that. And that's a gap, and we, by voting no, that was, okay, we don't have coaching and we don't have this available for this department, this area. What is the, what, is there any other direction, or what is the board saying, and what we're going to do to replace that gap? Because right now, it's just, there isn't one, there isn't anything.
I'll just respond and reiterate what I said. I think that, that if there, we weren't told there was a gap and that's what the coaching was doing, we were told this is what the coaching was, was covering, we don't know for sure that it was a gap, that was not worded that way to us. And again, I.
I think it was.
Well, regardless, if it was, the word gap was used or not used, that particular contract for those particular reasons was voted down, I don't think it's, I mean, I, if we want to micromanage the work of the administration, we can say exactly what we do, but I don't think that's a good practice. So I think our lane is to wait for something to come forward to us, a proposed different contract, a propose, a proposal around what gaps there have been, now that this particular consultant was not approved. And then we go from there versus us offering recommendations around the ins and outs of what a consultant or a coach would do. I think that blurs the line of our role as a board.
Well, they did, they did speak of a gap, that this individual was, was filling a gap. I, I just want to know if we had any suggestions, that's all. And the suggestions.
So I.
Go ahead.
So my question.
If you wouldn't, if you're talking, when I'm talking, you're obviously not listening, correct? So.
Absolutely not correct.
Oh, you can't listen.
You don't need to take that.
You can't listen and talk at the same time.
Let's use some civility here.
Exactly. Okay, if someone's speaking, if someone's speaking, listen, right? Don't talk over.
Same, exactly.
Got it.
Should do as well.
Jason, I'm good.
So how is that gap defined? Do we have evidence there was a gap? Is that from teacher surveys? Is that from student data? That from results from the social studies on a specific screener? Where was that gap? How do we have that gap? Then how was it filled with a consultant? Do we have that information? If we look at other school districts, do they also use a social studies coach? That's not a regular thing. Now, if we look at mentorship, absolutely. A coach is usually a model teacher, has been teaching for a while, has a great bag of tricks in teaching, so can absolutely teach cross-content areas if you're coaching on strategies. So let's talk about discourse in the classroom, how that improves student outcomes. A coach would know how to coach toward that, and they could always measure student outcomes and use that as their guideline. So I'm not implying that ten coaches could cover mentoring, but I've seen it absolutely done. But I would definitely have the CNI director look at that and give that, he's there every single day.
I just think that if, if the idea was that there wasn't enough information, that we gave them the opportunity to present it, I know that we have newer board members, so they're still, you know, they're still getting acclimated to how we want to do things, I guess is the best way I'm putting it. So if there were more questions and we wanted them to answer those, we could have established them and let them bring back a stronger case for this, but we immediately kind of voted it down. And I heard that, you know, we had questions, and I think that would have been a perfect opportunity to kind of set like, okay, these are some of the things that we expect going forward if you're going to do more things like this. With voting it down immediately, we did not give them the chance to strengthen their case, if, if that's what we're looking for. And I think that's, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Quinn, what we're trying to establish here in terms of discussing this, like, okay, they, they clearly brought it to us for a reason, they need some sort of support, we didn't allow them to establish answers to our questions. We just kind of voted it down. And I don't want this to be a reoccurring theme where, oh, there's not enough information, we're just going to vote it down, if it's something that's very critical. And we're trying to establish a baseline for what these people should be bringing to us, and what information we want.
Anyone else with anything to add? Moving on to seven, reports and presentations, superintendent's report, Dr. Lisa Olson.
Yep, we had graduation that we celebrated on Sunday, June fourth, and thank you to the board members who attended. We had two hundred and sixteen students who are eligible. Two of those were non-graduating, we're hoping to finish those through summer school. So just to let you know, statistics, two out of two hundred and sixteen is not a bad statistic. But obviously, until we get a hundred percent, so just wanted to share that. And in my thirteen years as being a superintendent, and I think I probably heard the best graduation speech that I have in that role, and if you haven't heard that, I would highly recommend that you watch the YouTube video right around the ten-minute mark and spend the four minutes and fifty seconds listening to Abby's speech. We started our summer school today, and we're down a little bit from where we were last year. We'll, as Ryan and the APs who are here tonight, we'll typically share, once we're done with summer school at the end of the year in August, provide the board with a summary of that, because we do run some sessions in August also with summer school, so we'll get final numbers on summer school and share those out. We are still running a bus this year, and so working again with the Hales Corners Park and Rec Summer Program, where there's, that's a, that's a service that we're offering with them, and we'll continue to look at, that came out of Esser Dollars, if you remember, so that is not something we typically do, because we do not get paid for summer school. That is, that's a cost out of the district budget, there isn't a reimbursement for that. We get partial FTE resident student count, but overall, it's not a moneymaker for sure, it's a loss when we offer summer school. So we'll take a look at that, for some of that. So that kicked off today. I wanted to share that most of you are familiar with our micro credential models for our teachers, and with our redo and refresh last year, we offer a summer session of micro credentials, and those are into the learning stage and then implementation at three different levels. So at this point, principals and our director of construction are still reviewing those, but we received forty-seven applications for summer micro credentials, so just wanted to share the learning that our teachers are willing to do over the summer to continue to improve their practice. Three of our board members attended last Friday, which is always one of the highlights of the school year, the employee recognition celebration, highlighting those employees that have been with us, starting at ten years, the every five-year mark from that. And this year, we had five retirees, one who retired last October, if the board remembers and approved that. And then, as Quinn shared tonight, Paul Stino, who made a late decision for that. And so those retirees were there, and then celebrated the, the lunch with them. So that's always a nice event, and we moved that, when I first came where we're doing it, after school, outside of the district, and I think it didn't provide the recognition for all employees to give everybody and see that, and that opportunity. So we usually get lots of, you know, thank yous at that point, because I think it gives all staff, and not just educators, but all staff, the opportunity to be recognized and everybody else to have that same level of recognition. So that was a great way to always end our school year. Last Wednesday, our citizens advisory committee met for the third time. We finished up touring, we, of Hales Corners Elementary, and then there were some conversations afterwards. The committee just talked about what they want to do for next steps, some possibilities of that. And so they've invited a lot of staff members to their next meeting next week to sort of get staff input on the, some of the bigger projects, specifically high school science, high school physical education, Edgerton Elementary, K four and the gym space, I'm trying to think, kitchen, our food service and, and that. So they've wanting to hear a little bit from them, their voice about some of the projects, so they will be joining them there. They've also talked about a few other ideas and would like to meet for a couple of weeks, and then are going to, we, they've reached out to Todd several times since last Wednesday and asked for some additional information as they continue to work with that, and are considering asking to come in front of the board the end of August, just to give an update on where they are and some ideas and thoughts, and just to give a progress update. But that was the latest meeting there. We started to talk about tonight, and we knew that this would happen, as always is the case when we're in a biennial budget, one thing's moved, they move quickly. I mean, I think this is the first time people can remember in which there wasn't some back and forth or a little bit of that. It seemed like something just in an hour was reached overnight between the governor. And it looks like when the governor is in agreement with that, there looks like there's, like, it most likely will move forward. So two pieces of legislation or bills that are out there, we'll have hearings this week. One is related to the, the budget itself, and I think in John's proposal was talking about that. So the, the three twenty-five per pupil increase, which is much lower than our ask was, obviously, we knew that our ask maybe wouldn't be what it was at fifteen hundred, considering we got zero dollars the last two. But three twenty-five, as we think about that, and depending upon where districts budget, some districts budgeted and were very optimistic and put in five hundred dollars, so they're really having to go back and rethink where they are. So at least we're in a ballpark of being able to adjust that and not have to say, wow, we have to come back and, and think that through. And then there was some thirty million dollars that the governor has for some mental health services. We're not quite sure what that is or where that goes. My guess is it can't supplant services that we're already providing. When it comes in the terms of grants, that's always a matter of what, you know, the devil is in the details. Sometimes when we did school safety grants, they were based on the size of your district, and so our large urban districts got a lot of those dollars and districts who weren't. So it depends upon if they're competitive grants or per pupil guarantee. So in the mental health grants, we're not quite sure if that means you have to offer something new that you current are, if currently are, if there's going to be something that you have to select or choose from. The way that the school safety grants were, like, was pretty much you have to do these things from a list, way too early to know what that is. So we're not sure how that thirty million dollars might impact our current budget, to what extent for any of the services that we do. We talked about the thirty-three percent reimbursement aid. There was probably the largest, the historic, largest historical increase to voucher increases per, per student on that, and that's where a large part of the budget. So just to be aware, when they talk about the increase in spendable dollars, that's not just public schools, it's also voucher, voucher schools. And so that's the part of it that, when you read through that, you have to understand when they say more than a mil, a billion dollars in spendable dollars, that's not all to public schools, that also goes to voucher schools. So there was a thousand dollars per pupil increase to voucher schools, so that's something we have to remember. And that does impact our levy, when we have choice schools, and some of the schools within our boundaries do have that. So that always comes back within our tax levy. So how that plays out, we'll have to see. The other part of it was a fifty million dollars that was set aside for a literacy bill. And so that part of it, that's part of the budget, yet is a standalone, so they include the fifty million, yet the, the literacy bill is sort of over here by its side because. because of legislature, and they're trying to be very clear, which has always been a habit of mixing language with dollars because that's where all the strings get attached. That seems to have, you know, support in it. I think, again, a couple of the pieces are devils in the details type of things. I think there's some questions around if there's specific vendors. I think anytime there's been vendors in there, there's always questions from anybody. I think we were recalling, there was one with the Student Information Systems because Skyward is a Wisconsin-based company. A few years ago, when DPI was requiring that that be the vendor you have to use, like, you know, is there, is there, have we vetted through all of that? So I think there's a question on the vendors that get choose. You know, and the question always is like, where's the local control in that? Where is the accountability at the state, or what part of that is there? I think probably the thing that most people, I think we support the accountability in it. I think the biggest questions that I'm hearing from colleagues are around the third-grade retention piece of it and the details around that, that I think that's a little bit concerning. And I see Rachel shaking her head, that is concerning to most of us because of the social piece of it and just the details, you know? So if you get a student that moves into your district in third grade, and they've never, like, they've not been here, and we have that. I remember Chris at the eighth-grade promotion asking those students behind him, how have you joined Whitnell and K-4, K-5? And if those would have said like, second grade, and they were only here for a year, like, how much of that is really, and so, and we do get students from, there's a lot of questions. So I think there's questions around the retention policy. I understand what's behind it and support that, but I also know that the social development of students at that point, or to what extent, you know, if we're not taking advantage of things that the district has, like summer school or after-school, like, to what extent, when we're trying to do some of those. So those, I think, were the most questions our people, and the overall policy is around that piece of legislation. And then I think that's where it all is because sometimes the details don't get worked out in these bills, and all of a sudden, we pass this and then tell somebody else to work on the details, and then they realize that some of that doesn't align with, it's in conflict. That happened with some career technical education bills, and they ended up having to go back into session and fix it because it actually reversed something that they had wanted to do and, again, didn't work through the details. So we'll continue to look at what that is. I think theoretically, we approve the accountability pieces of it. We just want to see, like, you know, we've already started down the roads with a lot of those pieces and some of those things in there. We had a statewide required screener, we do a screener, but now if it goes back to a mandatory vendor, like, where does that put us in terms of all of that? So those are just questions we have. Lots of activity between now and June 30th, specifically this week. We have an SWSA meeting tomorrow in which we'll talk about that, get a little bit more pulse on where is it or if it's sort of done at this point. So those are sort of the updates related to legislative, so, or any of the topics, I'll take questions on any of those.
This is more a comment with the third grade, that is such a sticky piece. Also, it's calling for intensive intervention than for those third graders. So where do those interventionists come from? Do we have them, are there, that's always been a hard position to fill. So something to think about.
Yeah, and we even talked about that, you know, we do, and we had good response this year. I mean, Katie and team sent out letters to parents, to students who are below that and highly recommended that they do some summer school, and we've talked about that. But if a parent doesn't, like, to what extent then, when we're trying to work with that to get students caught up? And, and the options we have available sometimes are being taken advantage of. Those are the questions that we have around that, to what, to what extent then, you know, are we doing that? So, yeah, so more to come on all of that.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Olson? Moving on to number eight, announcements.
All right, I've got a couple things. So I just wanted to give a couple shout-outs. So today is the first day of summer school, and I want to say thank you to all the teachers who are sticking around for summer school after a long year. So thank you for your time, I know there's lots of nice programs, and I hope those classes go well. I also wanted to thank the middle school team for a very nice eighth-grade promotion ceremony. I wanted to mention that the golf outing is coming up, and there's still time to register because I registered my husband and I today. So that's coming up on Friday. And then I wanted to give a thank you to the music department, who planned and had just a lovely little potluck dinner, like, the last week of school with some awards and bringing that, those music families together was really very nice. So thanks for all of those things.
Just echo that kind of thank you to all staff across the district for the great school year. I know that there's a lot of work and effort that goes into every single role, a lot of hours that we don't see. So we very much appreciate that, and thank you again.
I'd just like to point out that my daughter is in summer school. She started her forensics class today, and so she's very excited to be able to solve mysteries and crimes in the future, so.
Number nine, meeting debrief, and this was where we're moving from that.
Yes.
I got nothing, I just thought we should somehow get answers.
I'll guess I'll take it then. So I think we're talking about a request for some discussion around the grading concerns that were brought up. So thank you, Katie, for bringing those forward. It was very interesting to hear about the process of, you know, letter to number to letter to number to letter. I think that the board should request some action on that, whether it's first a report, an understanding of the grading. I can see, when I was at this music bank, when a student came up to me and sort of said something around, grading doesn't make sense, and the way it was explained at this meeting to us is that, you know, at a point, you can't increase, it's, I can see how that is incredibly frustrating for students. And so I would like to know more about that in depth with some recommendations. I'm not sure why this is happening, so.
Can you specify what, you say you want to know more about it?
One moment, one moment.
Yeah, I think that as a board, we need to determine if this grading system and the way the scores are calculated is how we as a district want to do grading. I think that I am willing to take a step that far back. But in preparation for the 2023-2024 school year, we might have some time over the summer to look at our processes and find out if there needs to be adjustments in how the grades are calculated and reported, communicated to parent versus how they're communicated in whatever system we're using. So I guess I would be of the mindset of requesting, like, a report with some options. You know, here's the way we're doing it, maybe here's an option, here's some different ways of looking at it as we approach the 2023-24 school year. I know that there is a short amount of time to do that, but I think it's worth us putting the time in on.
Yeah, before we jump the gun and assume everything is, whatever it is, everything's broken, not that I don't believe people, but what I would appreciate is if the board could receive a breakdown of how the grading works, because it sounds like that was where the potential gap of information, if there was a lot of people that weren't able to explain it. If the board could get a report of how, when a teacher inputs a grade, how that gets translated to the end result to the student slash parent, so that we can understand the process if it's not readily available to us. So then, if we do see that there are obvious gaps in how one translates to the other, and you get to the, okay, well, I got a 94, but the system only lets you input a 92, if there is that gap and it's very obvious and we can fix it, let's fix it if it's not. But I'd like to know what we're dealing with first to go forward with that. So I'd appreciate if there is a comprehensive way for the board to see what currently is the process, or if there is a manual or something, that would be my ask.
I would echo that, just having to give us at least a context of what, of how the process works, so that way we can have at least, as was mentioned, of an understanding of the, of how things work. And if, if all of a sudden, through that, that reading and that comprehension, it becomes a, where holes are exposed and say, oh, didn't really kind of factor this into the process as a whole.
Sure, so I guess two things I would ask. I would recommend that the board move forward still and approve the student handbook as it is because you can go back and update the handbook. So I would not delay in proving what there is because this seems like a topic within a topic. I wouldn't delay the approval of some of the other technical changes there. So I guess that's the question because it's on the agenda for June 26th to approve. And so it doesn't mean that you couldn't continue to look at the grading and go back and update it throughout that. I would not recommend delaying everything else in the handbook because of this section on grading. I guess that's what I want to be clear on because, and remember, there is nobody else but me here on June 26th. Everybody else is on vacation. So the likelihood of having a board report on June 26th is not, because I'm not going to be the only person, I mean, I can go, but it's, it's going to be those out there who are delivering it and answering it. So I guess the handbook as it is, because we've done that before when we've had a procedural change with school safety, we brought back a section of the handbook in August because we've had to update a procedural thing with parent drop-off or whatever. So I guess I would not delay the entire handbook approval on June 26th because July 1st, we open up parent registration. And without an updated, for example, middle school backpacks or whatever it is, without having that so they can get started on the other changes, I wouldn't delay the entire handbook. Doesn't mean the grading still can't be looked at and things can't be adjusted after that. But I guess that's what I'm wanting to look at because this was a section within the handbook, but really brought up an entirely different topic, if you will, about where we're going with it, with the communication, if it's understanding what else outside of the handbook is done or what exists. So I guess that's the part I want to be clear on when we're asking for the report part of it.
Sorry, may I go? I think, too, with that, the handbook portion of it is general and not as specific enough to explain what the issue was in the beginning. So I don't know that necessarily that portion of it is going to mess with anything else. It's that that doesn't provide enough information, and it's not necessarily clear enough, or it seems that's what I understood. So to have more information on this, so that if we do find a flaw or it's more rampant than the issue at hand, that we can either address it or we can move to something else. But I think it's, we have a systematic issue of, or that appears to be the case, and I'd like to make sure we vet that before, you know, making a giant determination of things.
Yeah, I think the ask was more along the communication lines as to how you do that. Isn't, you know, solely the handbook, it could be something else. So that's, I understand that where, you know, we could go forward with the handbook, and there could be some other form of communication or presentation or whatever it is to explain that in the future.
I understand the recommendation, but we don't even have the updated handbook in the agenda. The one that we have available to us doesn't have any of the edits anyway for the high school.
Yeah, and that was a, that was a formatting thing that didn't get updated that way, so I hear what you're saying. But nobody told me that before tonight, it got updated last Thursday, and this is the first time I'm like.
Well, we wouldn't know that it was not updated, at least I wouldn't, as a.
The updates weren't noted, is what it, you can't see what the updates are, I believe they're in there.
No, they're not in there, they're not.
You said you couldn't see.
No, he's saying that the actual updates are there, but the comments said what was updated.
What's highlighted.
But still.
They're not there.
It's not, okay, don't.
I hear what you're saying.
I just wanted to say, thank you for the community members to bring that up. I, in my own personal household, experienced that. I had two very, very sad freshmen and sophomore. One at the beginning of the year had trouble, she is twice exceptional, so she has some executive functioning issues. But when then she got motivated, she was pushing for those As, got those As, understood her concepts, was proficient in some of the standards. However, broke down, had the counselor call me because that wasn't reflected then in her overall average. So then when the teacher actually reached out to me because of that and said, so-and-so's been working really hard, is proficient, however, I can't understand the grading system myself, and I can't explain it to her. We talked over the most recent grades on the summatives, and it did not move her grade. So someone that is in a motivated cycle where they don't experience traditional success, getting, seeing that, the inner workings of that really does, like, disrupt motivation. And then also, I had that with my other daughter in one class. She missed a summative in the beginning, and then there was no way of increasing that grade. So it just, and then again, talking to the teacher, the teacher said, I can't explain it myself. So that was also my experience, so I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Okay, so I'm looking at the schedule. So it looks like we would have an opportunity at the July 10th meeting to get sort of a comprehensive report on grading and how things are understood and communicated and how it works. And then it looks like, I don't know if this is correct, but we have, then the next meeting would be August the 14th?
July 24th.
July 24th, I'm not actually seeing the 24th listed on the web. But yeah, can we get that for July 10th? I guess we need, I think we need to start the conversations around this as soon as we can and make sure that it gets on the agenda.
First of all, I think my understanding that this is not readily available immediately. So then, if you're in agreement, we need to say so that that's what we want.
I'll make a motion that we have a report forward then.
What is, is the, like, the processes of it all, to being able to explain that to the board? Is that something that is, would not be available, is not readily available as far as the breakdown of how everything works?
No, I think verbally, we can share that, I don't think it's, I mean, and what it is, it's standards-based grading. If you get a 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, it doesn't easily equate into numbers. I can tell you conceptually what it is and it's been identified, so, I mean, I know what it is. So the understanding of it could be shared. The question then becomes from there, so I, I mean, I have to check people's schedule to see who needs to do that. We're talking more secondary, so Dr. Williams would have to be here, and probably both middle school and high school principals would have to be here. So I just have to check that that's a meeting. But to get that information on how it's done, I would also probably want Todd Stacy to be here because part of this is an issue with InfiniCampus and how, it's all related to a computer program. So if you've ever graded with, like, AP tests, you grade on a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and everything has to be mathematical. So that's, I would just want to make sure they're available, but we could explain it, yep. I'm just saying June 26th is an option because people aren't here. So the report to the board could be done on July 10th, assuming the people who need to be here are available. So that's not a, that's not a problem.
Would that satisfy everyone's request for having an explanation of the processes on July 10th?
Yes. Yes, and it gives everybody a baseline, gets us to an understanding, so we know where we go from there, I think so.
And I'll add, can we add, like, the history of why the grading is that way? Can we add that to the request as well?
Yeah, so, yep, there's probably several board memos in there when we've gone through and did this because it was presented to the board over the last several years. So we can go back and share some of it. So I guess part of this is, I want to share some historical stuff that's there, but also where we are now and have that, that ability to have that dialogue, so, yes.
From what I'm looking from the middle school handbook, they get one type of grade. They're scored one way in elementary school, they're scored a different way in middle school, they're scored a third way in high school. And I will agree that when I read the handbook, I did not understand that a 5 was a standard score. Level indicator to me was saying like a GPA numeric level equivalent, like, an A is worth this many points on however many point scale. So that, I will agree based on, the parent comment based on what we get, that did not jump out at me, that the 5 was a standard-based score versus a letter grade or a numeric average. And I don't believe, at least, I had used InfiniCampus in my career. I don't believe, and maybe it has changed, but it requires a standard-based score now? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, what I'm telling you is the logistics. No, what I'm telling you is the logistics of converting, so when you take an AP exam, you get a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right? You can't put a 3 in there, because if you're going to convert a standards-based rubric, it always needs a numeric calculation. So that's the part of it, that Infant and Campus, just like any grading program, has to convert things numerically. So part of this is this double conversion that's required. Schools that, I mean, that's, that's just, if you use Power School or whatever it is, there's that conversion piece of it.
But if we use standards-based, so I do.
Correct, correct.
The handbook doesn't even say anything about standards-based, nor does the policy, from what I'm gathering here. So that, I think, is a gap, given what is being brought to light. I don't see.
I think having a report and having administrators share with it would probably provide, yeah, yeah, I think that, and then questions can be asked from there. I think that makes the most sense. Yeah.
All right.
So July 10 seems like a date we can have that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And then a follow-up to the, about approving the handbook. So I guess logistically, when we get our hands on the one with the changes, that would be our process to do our homework, review that before, if that stays on the agenda, potentially for action next meeting, that would have to get in our hands.
I'll have, I'll make sure that the updated one is there tomorrow, and I'll make sure there's an email out with what that is, because, yep.
Anything else for the meeting debrief?
Rachel's raising.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to congratulate all the retirees. It's an exciting time. I also wanted to piggyback off of Cassie looking for resignations. I think right now, we're really seeing some teacher shortages all over in districts, and it's just going to get worse. So I think really, our job as board members is making sure that we're attracting and retaining, and so that's vital information to really see.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, a second. Uh, any other discussion? Nope, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries? Seven ayes, no noes, no abstentions. We are adjourned at 9:00.